Engstrom?
Here.
Engelhardt?
Yeah, here.
Here comes Doctor. All right. Hello, Doctor?
Good evening.
Okay, so then item three, don't sit down there. I pledge allegiance.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and item number four on the agenda is perfection and approval of the agenda. There's a motion for that, please.
I missed who made the motion.
Who, who made the motion?
Okay.
So, okay. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no, carry. Okay, item five then is, uh, uh, public comment time. Anybody got anything to say? No. None? No, nobody a public comment then, huh? All righty, let's move on then, then, whoa, Brian's not here yet. Well then, we'll move on to item seven then. We'll leave six until Brian shows up, okay? So we'll go on to item seven, uh, public hearing to amend budget FY twenty-four twenty-five, resolution number one four four dash twenty-four. A resolution adopting a budget amendment, number one, for fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five.
That's one four 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 dash twenty-four. Three fours instead of two.
One, sure.
Four, four, twenty-four. I thought you missed the four.
Okay. Just sure, yeah, yeah, good, that's fair.
So do you want me to speak?
Please, yes, yes.
Um, so, this is our first amendment about the current budget year, um, just a brief explanation of our changes. We increased expenditures for our property insurance expenditures, um, made a change in our hotel motel transfer of funds. Um, per our last audit, we had set up a separate fund for our hotel motel taxes and that needs to be in the general fund, so we're gonna be closing that capital fund and putting it into the general with its own line account to track it. Also corrected an error in the debt service, it was off by about a thousand dollars. And then we added in, the big expenditure was the Ziegler project, um, looking at construction this spring. And then, uh, the police purchase expenditures and training that you've approved here this last few months. So overall, six hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars worth of changes. So you can open it up to the public.
Sure, is there any, uh, we need to have a motion now to go into the public hearing?
Nope, you can just open it up to the public.
All right, so any comment from anybody out there? So what this actually is, is these are things that, uh, and I think Darcy explained that, but it's, it's expenditures that, uh, you know, everybody approved of, and we're just moving money in that direction. Yes. So no public comment?
You close the hearing?
We'll close the hearing, all right.
And if the council doesn't have any comments, you can go ahead and pass the resolution.
Any comment from you guys?
I'm going to pass the resolution one four 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 dash twenty-four.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There. Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Moore?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item seven's done, let's go back to item six, Brian. Come on up, please.
Sorry, I'm actually... Uh... Did I say my name again?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Brian Hinker with Assured Partners. Did not find any better vision options. The company that we were looking at or possibly gonna go to now has a minimum of twenty employees to, to enroll on that, so that didn't work out the way we were hoping. Uh, I did do a proposal here for third-party administration, uh, for that buy-down plan. Couple, I guess, of my thoughts going forward into twenty twenty-five would be the options that I think we should look at for, for twenty twenty-six, like right now I think we're set, set on well-marked, but, um, one thing we do, or can do as an independent, uh, agent or broker is look at the United Healthcare option and potentially Mid-America, which we had a very competitive pull with, but in talking with Darcy, this is the first year of that, that program in Iowa that we're a little gun-shy, we have about ten groups moving to them for one one. So that would be something that I essentially, I'd say, report back to next fall. What we're able to do, I don't know what your fees are today on, on the, the partial for the, the buy-down plan. But the way Wellmark does their commission in the small group market, it's just built into the rate. We're able to, because we've got a third party, we're able to do that within the, within the commission at Wellmark, so there'd essentially be no fees from what you're paying today with your, with your funding. So I've got that proposal here, that would require us to be your, your agent going forward in twenty-five. But that's, that's kind of my, the research I was asked to do, that's where, that's kind of where we're at, couldn't find a better vision. I like where we're at in dental. Then it would be exploring, really exploring our options probably earlier next year in twenty twenty-six and the possibility that we have the TPA services in the same place as, as your agent, for ideally better communication.
Is there no vision, you said?
Oh, we have vision, we have, we're northeast Iowa, we don't have a great network within plan. So I was asked to see if we can find something, we have a plan that we use, um, yeah, yeah, I don't know if I'm supposed to say that, but that works pretty well because you can go anywhere you want, get reimbursed. They changed the rules on that to have a minimum of twenty people enrolled, so we're kind of after one. That's gonna work, that's that.
Yeah, it was just okay. I mean, you only had so much to spend.
Yeah, there really isn't a great vision program out there. If you're willing to drive to Waterloo, La Crosse, you can get more bang for your buck by the time you pay for gas to get there, I'm not sure it's a better deal at the end of the day, but, um, it is good to offer, I think, you know, it looks for, you know, when new hires or people looking, it's, it's nice to have that option out there, but at the same time, when it's not great, I think Darcy probably gets negative feedback, we do too, that your vision program stinks, oftentimes from a lot of groups. Now, we don't take it away from groups because there could be a, you know, out of, out of a group of twenty, there might be four that, you know, they've got a household of four and they, they'll make a day of it and go to La Crosse and save hundreds of dollars. So it's not something to take away, but it's not, it's not...
Are there plans on the marketplace so that as employer you can offer a, a buyback for the employee?
Not really, just the networks just so, a lot of our independents just don't wanna mess with it, it's so, I think, time-consuming at the end, they're, it's just not worth it for them to hire somebody full-time to fight with insurance companies.
Right, any more questions for Brian? So this is one of those things that we have to, you folks have to make the decision on because, uh, this is the fifteenth, uh, of December, so that, this needs to be done, so we're, you know, right onto the gap.
I don't know if you know, Darcy, what the fees are today?
For our third party?
Yeah.
Uh, we pay, um, total about, oh, close to seven hundred a year to base.
That's the base to take care of that, and then with...
That third party, yeah.
With you, there would be no third party.
Right, that's what you're saying, right? We would go away from the base?
Yep.
So we would continue with the Wellmark Silver Plan for another year, go away from the base, and then see what's out there earlier for twenty-six.
That's exactly right.
And again, this was the same plan that you've...
Current plan we're on, yeah, yeah.
It, it does go up to six though.
Yeah, mhm. Yeah, so we'll be, have more, um, out of pocket.
And those would be things too, like, as we get working together, like, we can pull deductible reports and get a pretty good handle on historically where, where claims have been, so we don't get blindsided by that, that partial, but with a group that's small, it's, it's tough, tough too. There's not a lot of way.
So I have, I have a question, okay? So the pre, the current plan we have is, is Wellmark? And what, that was with Andy, right?
Correct.
And how did that one change compared to this Wellmark plan?
So...
How, how's, how's the differences between Wellmark and Wellmark?
Well, okay, so the original plan that we had signed a year ago with Wellmark Silver was for five thousand out-of-pocket, single, ten thousand, uh, family. However, when we got towards the end of the year here, I had an employee come to me and tell me that's not what our deductibles were. They were fifty-five, five thousand five hundred and eleven thousand families, so they weren't what we were told.
Okay.
Okay, so, I think though with the silver, it, the deductible changes every year, you can't keep the same, is that what I, the way I understood it?
Not necessarily every year, but it does move, I would say, more often than not.
Okay, so more out-of-pocket.
Yep. The other item, like if, um, I would wanna make sure we stress that can be a little confusing to the employee, I know the city doesn't give money into their, into their HSA, but technically their deductible is too low per, per the IRS standards for them to contribute to an HSA.
Yeah, and that's all union contract-driven for us.
And I just hope the guy, or that everybody knows that they, they can't, 'cause it's really, it's, it's weird, you go to your bank and show them, my Walmart card says HSA on it and the deductible's fifty-five hundred, let's say you can open up Hell Savings Account.
Right.
But when we buy it down, technically if they already get audited and they had contributed, it'd be...
Mhm.
And we're buying down the...
Deductible.
Yeah, this year it moves to six, so this year it moves from that fifty-five hundred to six.
Right.
And we're buying it down to five hundred?
Uh, single, seven fifty, family, one thousand five hundred is the buy-down.
Okay, the buy-down happens by what dollar?
What? City, it comes out of our account.
Pays that much?
Pays the employee.
Employee.
Through the third party who's reviewing the claims.
Yeah, basically we're paying that first, uh, fifty-five hundred dollars of their deductible for them.
Right, so, but it's like, it's set up different because like, single, I think it's the first five hundred in claims, the city reimburses, then the deductible, seven fifty, then the city up to the Wellmark. And I think family, it's the first thousand up to, then the employees, one thousand five hundred, then the city, so the city's the first one in the game, not the employee.
I kinda remember that, yeah, okay.
Mhm.
So, according to this chart, the monthly premium is two thousand one hundred and five dollars.
Uh, ten?
Well, no, that's just for one employee.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
But that's... Total would be ten thousand three eighteen, yeah.
That's what they have to pay for insurance?
Yeah.
That's what the city pays.
That's what city pays, yeah.
Mary, how long's it been since you bought insurance?
Thank you, plan, yeah.
It's a huge, huge deal.
So the silver is the one that we're...
Looking to renew, yeah.
So which is the same that we got now?
Mhm.
Only deductibles are gonna go up.
Well, yeah, and, uh, monthly premium's going up, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Yep. As far as the employer goes. So any other questions? So this is an action item. We'll have to take action on that tonight. If you so wish, kinda have to.
Now, this, this is the same thing we have now.
Is this a two-part then, on the, the policy and also the going with Assured as a broker, you know, broker, what do you want to be called?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, it'd be this, it's...
There's it all one motion?
You can do one motion.
Um, I would make motion to have the city's health insurance stay with, or continue on with the Wellmark Silver Policy through Assured Partners, Brian Hinker, with the increases as presented.
Is that good?
Yep.
All right, is there a second? Or further discussion?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Who, who's writing our policy now? Who has our insurance?
It's, it's through Farm Bureau.
Farm Bureau, okay, is it different, less, or more, is it more expensive through Farm Bureau then?
Yeah, we pay, um, membership to Farm Bureau and I think this is the same, it's the same.
The only, the, the difference would be the membership and then the part, or then the...
Third party.
Third party.
Seven hundred fifty dollars is the major differences.
And you haven't heard from him?
Nope.
Haven't heard from, from Bureau?
Nope, I have not.
I guess I'll second it then.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye? Those say no? Let's carry.
This is, well, we can talk about it.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Brian, thank you.
Have a good night.
You bet, too. Okay, let's go on to item eight then, resolution number one four four five dash two four. That is a resolution approving budget transfers for FY twenty-four twenty-five. And that's what we've...
Just did in your budget amendment, um, these are the changes in transfers that I'm doing for your budget amendment.
So we would need a motion, please. Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Carrie? Whenever you're ready, Darcy.
Moore?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, yes, thank you. All right, item nine, and sidewalks, oh, come on up. If you wanna tell everybody what your name is, please, 'cause we're broadcasting.
Okay, my name's Raul Martinez, and I'm a citizen here of Postville, have, Postville, I have been for eleven years.
Oh, you're good.
I'm here to discuss, not so much the sidewalks, but the handicap ramps. And the reason I'm here to discuss the handicap ramps is because in the short time since they finished doing the streets and putting in the, the handicap ramps, I've seen two people fall on, a third of you include me, and two that fell at the forward stop, so that's five people total. Um, according to the American Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety from George Bush, he signed into law that there were certain parameters that those ramps had to be made, specifications. And the specifications that he pointed out to were, the ramp itself had to be between zero and ten-degree grade, okay, from level, from being horizontal, and the sides were to be no more than ten to fifteen degrees. Now, I don't know if you've paid attention or looked at these ramps around here, but the sides of the ramps, they are not ten to six, ten to fifteen, sixteen degrees. They're a lot worse, and when you, when you walk, as you walk, it's like walking off a, a, a high step. And I went down, I scuffed up my knee pretty good, and that's not a big deal, 'cause I can heal. But the reason I'm bringing this to your attention is because number one, DOT brought this in, correct? They did all the work, so they have to conform to federal regulations, correct? Okay, being that the case, I'm here because one day, in the two ladies that I saw fall over here right across the street over by Sandy's Hair Salon, um, they were elderly women, and they didn't just hit the deck and bounce right back up, they stayed down there for quite a few minutes. And my concern is this, if we don't do something, not necessarily to shave down the ramps, but to make them more noticeable where people will not trip on them, I'm afraid somebody's gonna fall and they're going to hit their head on that concrete, we're gonna kill somebody. And then the city or the businesses front or whoever is, they're gonna be involved in a lawsuit. And what bothers me is it could have been prevented. Anyways, if you look at the sheets that I gave you, it shows, like, on page thirty-one, it shows, on the left-hand, left-hand side, if you see that little wheelchair, okay? It shows a ten-degree grade going down on the side, that is not ten degrees out there, okay? And if you look at page thirty-three, it shows the incline of the ramp itself, see that top bar right there? It should be anywhere from twelve to sixteen degrees. So there are parameters that they have to work within, and they're not. Now, if they did that in this town, my guess is they did it county-wide, you know? 'Cause they did a lot of work in a lot of cities. Anyways, um, I, I don't expect you folks to do anything about it 'cause it's getting cold outside, we're gonna get snow eventually. But I think that what we ought to do, just my suggestion, it's just my suggestion, we need to table this until the spring, and then we need to come up with an answer to make these more, more visible, so that people do not get hurt walking around the town. We need to make this, we need, we're trying to make the town safe.
What degree, what degree do you think that they are now?
You know, it's funny, you should, you should mention that, I ordered a meter which will actually, it's got, it's got an infrared beam and it will measure the, the incline of the ramp. So it's coming.
Oh, you don't have, okay.
No, but when it comes, I will let the city use it and they can go and test every one of them they want. 'Cause if you look, if you look at the old sidewalks in the town that were not rebuilt, they're nothing like that. They've got...
They're supposed to have paint on them to rub it, I think they should, yeah.
Well, I don't know if they have paint on them or not, but the sides are no more than twelve degrees, I mean, they're, it's a gradual slope. And the thing is, the reason they said, uh, ten degrees is because theoretically, somebody is supposed to be able to take a wheelchair and if they don't go down a flat ramp, they should be able to go up the sides without, without turning over.
Now, downtown, I mean, it seems like some of the, I don't, I haven't looked at every single one of the ramps, but don't they have that metal, like the...
They're beads.
Truncated dome.
Yeah, that's kinda tells you that you're there, I guess.
Well, yeah, that's all well and fine, but...
If you're looking for something that...
I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't know what the purpose of those was, so it's not slippery, I don't know. No, I thought that's...
Perhaps, perhaps. But, you know, it's, it's, if I had an opinion and if I had a voice, what I would do is I would paint the ramp one color, paint the sides yellow, and have caution written on the sides of them. So that as you're coming up to the ramp from the side, you would see caution. Pardon, do I need to say this in Spanish?
No, I'm, the caution, isn't, if you put caution on it, not everybody knows what caution means when it's down.
Well, first of all, the color yellow, it would rather...
Kind of a universal type thing.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna paint it green, you don't wanna paint it red.
It will be interesting when you get your meter to see just how far off these are, 'cause I, I agree with you, some of these are just, man, they're, they're like, some of them are like a...
Done new?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And that was approved by the, by the I, DOT?
Well, I don't know, they just did it, and to be honest with you...
Who did this, that did it was by the contractor?
It was, it was a part of the transition.
Did the DOT, did they set the grade, did they, did they tell the contractor what it should be?
I would be...
I'm trying to grab where the li, where the liability lies here. Did the contractor just do it the way he wanted to? Did I, the DOT say, this is the way it should be?
All the ones that I watched were being raised, they didn't use a form, they freehanded these things.
So then, so that was the contractor, not the DOT?
No, I don't believe it's the DOT, but something has to be...
Something about the DOT approving it.
That's only because the DOT, they have to hire these people. The DOT was contracted to do this work, it's not...
Yes, their work.
Then, then regardless of who did the work, they're responsible.
Yeah, they would've had to sign up.
Sure, they have to be responsible.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, who's, who's liable, this is big bad boo-boo.
They went, they...
And so, to me, the only way to remedy is not to assess the property owners.
No.
That's what you're suggesting in their privacy?
No, I'm not, we're talking, that's a whole different story.
Yeah, that, that's sidewalks, sorry.
Well, that's sidewalk, okay, okay, um, so I, I think we need to go out, who is, who is responsible in the spring, and that, if that has to be jackhammered out, then they have to jackhammer it at their expense.
Whatever it takes to repair it, we need to do that.
Well, and I, I believe, I believe there will be action before the spring, because this is still fresh on everybody's mind.
Right.
And...
Even three people that you know of.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, actually, there's four plus a knucklehead.
And as far as I know, there was four DOT engineers here all day long. You know, so, I mean, when these folks, when, when everything gets closed up and everybody signs off, you know, then, then it's almost too late.
Right.
Something should have been done before anybody pulled out of town here.
Agreed.
You know?
Agreed.
So we're gonna make mention, I don't know who we're gonna get ahold of, we're gonna get ahold of somebody. And they're gonna know this before spring happens, because otherwise they're gonna say, what, what did that town just wake up? No, we didn't, we, we, we're seeing this.
But first what we need to do is we need to get that meter and test them before we skip our foot.
That, that's fine, but, uh, um...
I agree.
I, the, tho, those, I'm taking a look at the information you gave us.
Yes.
That, it, this, it ain't even close.
No. Oh, no.
No, so, yeah.
No, no.
We're, we're all, five of them at the same one?
No, that's the interesting part, no, two were at the four-way stop, okay?
Okay, you did say, I'm sorry.
And two were, well, actually, three were at, at right, right corner from, yeah, from the city hall.
Going onto the highway or onto the street?
Under the... Under the...
Onto the highway, is that the ramp that you're talking about, or on the street? In front of Sandy?
The ones, the one in front of Sandy's going on, going onto the street.
Onto the, onto the green street.
Yeah.
Onto greens, not law.
But all four of them are absolutely the same.
Well, I thought the one with, um, fifty-one or lower, I thought that was the one that was...
The interesting thing is if you can just buy something online to read the, the slope, something simple, the twenty, thirty-dollar item, and these engineers can't figure it out with degrees.
Um, guys, we had a handicap spot that was painted on the ground and had assigned to the library, and they redid it and got rid of it. And we had to let them know that we needed to have a handicap spot still. And so they redid an entire ramp, we used to just have a cute little incline right up into the library. Now you have to get in your wheelchair, go around your car, go onto the road, and go around a ramp to get into the library. Because they, they did not notice the blue paint on the handicap sign. That was still there, by the way, the sign never got taken out, so as they were putting all normal parking spots, there was a handicap sign standing there.
Wow.
So, we should question everything they do.
Yeah.
Well, again, if the ramp was one color, let's say the ramp was blue, this is a handicap ramp, if it was blue and the sign...
Visually, you see that, yeah, sure.
Visually part.
But that's not, that's just a temporary.
And it still doesn't make, it still doesn't make it, right? It just puts a lipstick on it.
I didn't think how slippery it's gonna be when there's snow, yeah?
Snow on the road.
Yeah, it'd be like a ski slope, you know, and you don't want a ski slope there, so, yeah, I got you. Well, thank you, but, yeah, when you get that, get that tool, that'll be interesting, you know, to get that, uh, thank you.
Is there anywhere else?
All right, okay, so, uh, but I, I, we will, we will have a conversation with the DOT. All right, let's go on to item ten, then, urban revitalization applications, Darcy, you wanna?
Um, so, under our urban revitalization, um, plan, there are two applications before you, um, that would possibly qualify for this, um, abatement. And it is for four forty-three North Lawler and four forty-five North Lawler. Um, one of them is complete, the other one is, um, currently under construction. Um, however, if you approve these, we send them on to the assessor, and the overall determination if they qualify is up to the assessor to determine.
So with those two labs, like, one's at school forty-three?
Yeah, they're right by each other, mm-hmm.
Is that the one where the man's gonna now build a house, and he owns the next one, that came here?
No, one is, um, Mueller's Law Office, converted to a single family, that's the one that's under construction. The other one was, uh, that home that we were gonna take, yeah. So if you agree, we'll make a motion to approve these, and we'll get them sent off to the assessor.
We approve these and get them forwarded to the assessor.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, all right, any further discussion?
Can you just explain to me what all that, how that works?
All right, so, um, under residential, under exemptions, it's like page four of that plan. Okay, so, anyone who improves their property by seventy-five thousand dollars of actual value added, so assessed value, right, and that's up to the assessor to determine, then they could get a tax exemption for five years on that growth. So, but school taxes are not exempt, so they don't get an exempt from what they owe the school on that growing value, which would just be the city's portion.
And it's forgivable, I mean, it's not-
Right, yeah.
So it's up to seventy-five thousand, or more than?
They have to have seventy-five thousand plus. Yeah, if they don't, if they don't have, meet that valuation, which the assessor determines, then they wouldn't qualify for the abatement.
Isn't that coming to what we get for property damage?
You're right, yeah.
But it also helps get back in five years what we can-
Right.
Collect.
Correct, yeah, and it gives an incentive for people to improve, yeah.
And these are both residential?
You're right, yeah, both would fall under the residential.
All right, so we, are you, are you good?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand it.
Yeah, you got it, though.
I think so.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, right?
So, yeah, the second one, the second application only says sixty-two thousand.
Yeah, so that, like I said, it would be up to the assessor to determine it, so-
So that one may or may not?
May, may not.
Okay, any more questions? Not all of them favorite, say aye?
Aye.
Both say no, Carrie, thank you. My goodness, we already did to the consent agenda. What's going on here?
We're at the-
We're at the consent agenda.
We asked Crystal about these things and things here, is that part of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Hometown to the World group, who, who is that and what is that? I just, I appreciate you giving us this in detail, seeing what you did, you know?
Hi, I'm Crystal Duffy, I'm the postal favor director in the community of Elkhorn City Postal. So Hometown to the World is a Facebook group that, when I started with Heart and Soul, had six hundred people in it, and now has over fifteen hundred people using it. Well, to be fair, I'm sure there's some bots in there somewhere, but, um, it's a quite active group where people are sharing, you know, Veterans Memorial will share about events, uh, the rec center, the Y will share about events, the school district shares things on there. I share things for the city, we share things for the library. Um, I'll share things at the police department post things, I share things the city posts, so it's a one-stop shop for people in the community to figure out what's going on, and it's been really, really useful.
Is that-
And I would say it's probably one of the primary ways in town people are getting information and hearing about things.
Is that the same site that was shut down during the campaign, like, the campaign?
Yep, and now it's got a bunch of rules, and we kick people out if they don't follow.
Okay, and so how do these bots get in?
Five moderators. Well, there's been a lot less of those. There's been a lot less of those, but some of them are, you know, technology is pretty good, but, um, I don't think we've probably seen hardly any since we instituted all the rules.
They don't have enough guts to, to say their name.
Well, lots don't have guts, they have fake profiles.
Yeah, that's, somebody's behind the bot, that's what I'm getting, somebody's behind the bot.
You know, they actually have people sitting behind hundreds of cell phones, all plugged in to the net, that are all programming. So it's not just like a person behind a profile, it's a person behind thousands of profiles. So, anyway, any, it's pretty obvious, if someone's trying to clean your vents, the vent cleaners, those have come up a lot less since we added the rules. Um, and we have new admin, too, there's more of us. Um, and sometimes it's like, buy these sneakers, or wanna work from home, selling candy or something, or, it's, it's all very obvious, so.
You know, it was kind of a sensitive issue after the campaign.
Yeah, that's why we have rules that say no politics.
Right. So-
Yeah. Yeah, it's just for community events, and to share things, I mean, sometimes things can be, you know, we've got, if there is something going on in town that concerns our safety, we're absolutely gonna share that, for the most part, it's a pretty positive place where we share good things going on in the community.
The other thing is holiday guide, diversity celebration team, funny, uh, what, where, I know you have one at the school, I think last year.
Uh, and every two years, the school is, after COVID, they've only done it once since, but every two years, the schools do, does a diversity celebration, so they did one in twenty twenty-three. Um, and I've joined the team for that for twenty twenty-five. Uh, my thinking for sort of the first few months I was doing community development was that it would be better for me to join events that are already happening and help facilitate those than create things from scratch, like, why reinvent the wheel? We already have good things going on, and how can I help facilitate those things? So it's me, Ryan, and Annette, um, and we already met, and we've all got some action items to do to try and make this year a little bit bigger, a few different things than, than two years ago, you know, keeping it within realistic bounds, but adding a couple new elements, which will not be shared today, um, for it, and it's in April, I don't have the date memorized.
That's always a great event.
Yeah, so we, we basically had a bunch of comments from folks in the community about ways to make it better, things that they liked, things they'd like to see, and we met and talked about all those, and we're all working in different ways. We, right now, are looking for performers for that, in fact, cultural performances, could be dance, or singing, or other kinds of things. We've got flyers up in the library, I'll be putting some more up around town, we're spreading them around, so, looking for performers.
I'd like to ask the question, it's kind of off that track, but, um, you're talking to businesses and things of that nature, where your position as the community developer. Well, I was wondering now, I heard that the pharmacy is going to close.
You can lead a horse to water, and I'll leave it at that.
I also heard that there's somebody that's interested in opening a pharmacy. I don't know, do you know?
Um, I will say that there have been a lot of us working very hard to keep the pharmacy open, but I don't think it's gonna happen.
Right, well, I don't think it is, either.
Yeah, um, so is that true that they're gonna close the thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
What? The thirteenth was the thirteenth.
What was the eighteenth?
The thirteenth of this month, yes.
Eighteenth is the last day?
What do you think they're-
No.
The eighteenth is the last day.
It was originally the eighteenth, it's, well, the-
Yeah, I think it's the thirteenth, yeah.
It changes.
Yeah, it does, yeah, there's-
And then, what about, um, where Cybert has Puff Core Employed, that's-
I think, uh, they're, yeah, they're closed, and I think they're clearing out inventory and-
What's this now?
And working on that.
Smoke shop. Okay.
That Puff Core-
Puff Core Employed, they're clearing out their inventory and working on that.
Is we're gonna try to put something else in there then, or can, we can't really force them to yet, and so maybe we can work on-
Well, I don't know if they're looking to rent that out, or if they're looking to sell it, but they're clearing inventory.
And I've heard two different things, who owned it, does Amy own it, does Mr. Cybert own it?
No, Cybert owns it.
Who does? Cybert's?
It's Cybert, sorry, yeah, yeah.
I think that, I think I have questions about in there, thank you for your part.
Did we do the, um, for the library, the budget amendment for us? All right, just make sure.
Yes, you're good.
Thanks, Crystal. You can go.
Okay, so, um, under my reports, I just wanna make sure you all saw the budget process calendar that I had sent out. Um, be mindful of my tentative dates that I have out there for, um, budget work sessions. So we're looking at, um, your next regular scheduled meeting of January thirteenth will just be your preliminary, and we'll hear from boards and organizations at that meeting. On January twentieth, we're looking at a six o'clock work session, right now, tentatively. Um, then at your regular meeting on February tenth, you will set your public hearing on your, um, property tax levy for April seventh, again, that'll be a special meeting, um, just with the timeframe and the proof of publication requirements. You cannot have that before the tax statements are mailed out, so you can't have your truth and taxation statements until after March twentieth by the auditor, so March, or April seventh for your special, you'll open your hearing like you did last year, if anybody wants to ask about your truth and taxation statements they got, you close it, there's no other business. Then you'll go into a, you'll open the meeting back up at about six thirty-ish, so maybe six you start, six thirty you start a new meeting, and then you can set your public hearing for your budget, and we're looking at setting that for, um, the twenty-first of April. And again, that would be a special meeting again, just because of the way that your meetings, your regular meetings fall, and proof of publications are required. So, right now, that's your tentative schedule for your budget. Yeah, it's in your, it should be on your tablet, I sent it out.
It's the very last page.
Yeah, okay, but I'll make sure you get a copy of it as well.
So, mine is with the cameras from October first, when they shut the cameras down, here within the last month. Um, there's appeal process for those speed cameras for, throughout the whole state of Iowa, um, to appeal the decision of the DOT and what they determined. And so there is other towns all jumping on board, and they're gonna appeal their decision, and I think, uh, Postville should be one of those towns, too, that should jump on and apply for the appeal process, which needs to be all filled out, turned in by February, February of twenty twenty-five. So I'm just kinda giving you guys a heads up that we're gonna go proceed with the appeal process, just like everybody else in the state. And the, the DOT's, on their comment, their ruling, anyway, it was very vague in how they explained why the, these cameras in Iowa got shut down for different towns, and why some of them were able to keep them and some weren't, so. Why?
So the DOT, it's like you have this quasi-governmental organization of bureaucrats that gets to decide and legislate, it's almost like the federal government.
Of course.
Other people that are elected didn't get, uh, or I, I see your point, okay, I'm not sure where, what, what the right way to go is, you know, but it seems like there's an agency here that thought they had more authority than they probably should have had.
Right, and like, and the response that the DOT gave to the towns that had the cameras, it wasn't, it was very, like I said, it was very vague, um, an explanation of why they-
Summarize it.
It's not, it's not necessary.
Not necessary, yeah, it's a money grab.
No, just not-
They didn't even need to go into that, that's all. They, uh, Darcy got a, um, a, uh, printout of all the, all of the, uh-
Towns they got.
And the cameras, every camera, every camera, and they got, they got down to the explanation of why they thought they, why they closed it down, it said it was not necessary. You know, I've used that excuse a lot of times in my life, and it didn't work.
Yeah.
So why it worked this time, I have no idea.
It's because when people fall down the handicap ramps, they'll slow traffic down.
There you go.
Yeah, 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 it's, it's crazy, yeah.
Lay there and ponder, slow cars down.
Well, it was just random, you have to keep it, I mean, they're either legal or they're not legal, I mean, so-
I mean, Cedar Rapids got shut down, too.
Yeah, I know.
Even in the S curve?
S curve, they kept it open, but the other ones are off.
No, the S curve at Cedar Rapids is still on.
Yes, but the other, but the other ones prior to the S curve from the north and south side, they're, they're shut down.
I can never understand why our camera was put so far, on, on the one that goes out towards, I thought the school and the library should have been more the spot of intensity, but maybe we gotta stop them out there.
There's speed studies that were done, and that's where they determine-
Different points in time, coming into town where, okay.
And, and so with that saying, with this appeals process, they're still collecting data on both ends of town here. Both, the cameras are, I mean.
Okay, okay.
And so we're, they're gonna take all of them, combine it together, and turn it in to the DOT and say, okay, this is what we have, this is-
And the other cities are doing the same.
Other cities are doing that same thing, yep.
We were, we were kinda directed that way, we, we've been in contact with our attorney, our city attorney, you know, and, and, um, because every city has got different data, you know, and so, um, the, I, honestly, it was my thought, why don't we all just get together and go hammer on it? You know, as, as a big group, well, that, that's, that's not what he thought. He said, you know, everybody, you take your data sets and you, you just go with it, because that's exactly, I mean, you can't get any more proof, you know, so-
Unless, if you throw everybody together, it's kinda like, what's the average?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
You've got zero and a hundred, and the average is fifty, when ours might have been-
Yes.
Our data set might have been, uh-
So it makes sense, I guess, I guess it makes sense, you know, so, yeah.
So how do we still get eleven thousand dollars from the cameras?
They're still coming in.
The money is?
Yeah.
Oh, from people, okay, I, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I had a call today from someone that was in the collections, that was dated back in May.
Yeah, so it's over.
Twenty-four, and they're like, how, I wanna know if this is legit, and I'm like, got your vehicle, yeah, it's legit, so, yeah.
But I, you know, you always get these examples, though, honestly, it goes the other way. I had a lady yesterday, uh, went to Gunder for lunch, and, and she came up sad, she was just gonna talk, you know, which is great. Well, and then she said, you know, and then she said, I hear that the cameras are off, and I said, yeah, they are. Probably shouldn't have said that, but anyway.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, that's probably what I, but she said, she just said, I got picked up twice. Yeah, got, or got the ticket twice, and she said, I think that probably did your town a lot of good, and she wasn't complaining about the money, she was saying people actually slowed down, just exactly what we've been trying to do here, you know, yeah, but. No. So I think if you, uh, I guess, uh, I don't know if you wanna make it a motion or not, but if we even get your good graces on trying to pursue with this, because I think this is something we need to do, so, yeah.
If you need a motion, I know that we pursue it.
I think that wouldn't be a bad idea, that, uh, okay, is there a second to that? All right, any further discussion? Not all of them favorite, say aye? Both say no? Those say no. All right, we're gonna go at them then.
You need a motion to approve the consent agenda then, unless they have something?
Yeah, any, anything else then for the consent agenda? All right, is there a second? All right, all those in favor say aye? Those say no? All right, that's carried. Then we've got item twelve, then, a resolution for money to pay the claims. Motion for that, please. Mary? Second? Darcy, whenever you're ready.
Moore? Moody?
Yes.
Engstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, item thirteen is more public comment time. Anybody wanna say anything? All right, nothing then, okay.
I'm talking about sidewalk inventory for next spring.
Yeah, for spring.
There's some places that don't have sidewalks. Well, it's like going from, how do you determine where there should and shouldn't be sidewalks? If there's, I'm gonna pick up my Uncle Jack's, there's a sidewalk, and it ends at his property line.
Yeah, we don't, we don't force people to, the code doesn't force somebody to have a sidewalk. But if you have a sidewalk, it has to be maintained.
Okay, 'cause then it would go down past your Colonel home, but I don't think there's a sidewalk there either.
Nope.
But you know what, I saw on the, um, minutes from the pool meeting a couple months ago, where they're wanting sidewalks down Grand View and Par, uh, Park Street, because the kids have to walk in the street to get to the pool. And I just, I just happened to read that in the minutes. And they said they'd look into who's on sidewalks, and the Bo and I are the sidewalk queens, so.
Yeah.
And Grand View would be which one?
That's, uh, right by the pool going.
Out by, uh, where Dave Schmidt lives, where the, the man's what it was.
Yeah, 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 okay, that street.
Yeah, that's true.
West of it, which is Park Street, by Boom doors.
Well, I, where I live, there's no sidewalk.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
But, like you said, that's not, that evidently wasn't established at that time, you know, you, and then, uh, they just, I don't know how they'd come up with that decision, but they did. Sure.
If you wanna make a complaint about a sidewalk, is the person whose property it is, can they find out who, who made the complaints about?
Yeah, somebody complained about you, and I mean, that's an example.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'd say somebody complained about your sidewalk, not that we can find out.
Yeah. I know a sidewalk that needs to be taken care of because it's dangerous, but I don't wanna.
You don't wanna be the complainer.
Yeah.
So come spring, come this spring, we are going to be doing a sidewalk inventor, inventory of this whole town. And we're gonna put together a sidewalk plan, so let me know what it is, I'll put it on my list. Um, but yeah, come spring, we won't do anything with sidewalks with winter coming, because it's just not feasible that anyone could repair sidewalks.
What if somebody is going to ice melt, um, during the winter? Cause like, when we walk the dog.
Yeah, so that would be something you'd need to notify us, cause we'd notify people of sidewalk ice snow removal, there's code on that, so, yeah.
You said, if somebody uses the wrong ice, no?
No, they don't, they don't.
Don't use it at all.
And then there's a sidewalk that is really breaking up, and
Yes.
I just about fall on a couple times, and I've had back surgery to break up my back, and no, I'm scared to death.
No.
I've got ront and all kinds of stuff.
Have you ever said to them, would you, for your sidewalk? Not easy.
You can't talk to these people, Darcy.
Well, we, there's lots, lots of complaints filed during the winter, you know, and we go after them.
Yeah.
Uh, but I don't know if you guys know, uh, Darcy, you wanna explain that new ruling?
Okay, so, um, you saw that article that was written by Upper Explorer Land, that actually came out in the League of Cities several months ago. So
And it was in our.
The ruling states that property owners are responsible for sidewalks, however, the liability falls upon the city, not the owner. So you would have to show that you are due diligent with staying on top of your sidewalks to make people maintain them, to, you know, for that liability purposes, just like we maintain sewer lines, we maintain water lines, we maintain streets. We're showing that we have a maintenance program, that's how we defer the liability. We would need to do the same with our sidewalks. So that's why we need to get together this list, and we need to start enforcing compliance with sidewalk repairs.
Is there somewhere in print where it actually designates what a bad sidewalk is?
Yeah, so our code regulates it. Yeah. Chapter one thirty-six, if you wanna look it up. Okay.
So, I guess, okay, so, uh, mayor's report, I, I don't have much to say, I, and it's, well, we're gonna, before we meet again, we'll have gone through Christmas, so I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. And, and one thing about the winter, you know, as we get on to the winter, we need to, uh, I think we need to keep an eye out for our neighbors, especially when this weather, weather turns bad and gets rough, you know, so let's keep an eye on, on everybody, you know, so we can uh, get through the winter and, uh, probably hopefully enjoy spring whenever that shows up, but, uh, I think that's something we need to be doing. I'm done. So council members, any comments?
I'm leaving town Friday.
Are you?
We're leaving town from Friday, we'll be back on the twenty-ninth, Friday the thirteenth.
Yeah.
The city park lights are on.
Yes, they are.
You're welcome.
Also, there was a light on in the pool house.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was just forgotten or just make sure it's.
They haven't put those lights on yet, have they? We got some solar lights that are gonna be going up there too. Light on in the pool house.
Outside.
This is inside.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll check. Right. Motion to adjourn.
Have a happy holiday, everybody.
Second? All in favor say aye? Aye. Those say no. All right. Thanks, everybody.
I love your joy shirt.
May, may require us to your, uh, who you are.
Oh, I just started working.